It's how I walk in and Mr. Luxon is standing there in the morning and I say, "Hey, Mr. Luxon, how are you doing today?" And we have a quick conversation then I move on. And being involved with things like student council where these students who are involved with all kinds of other things in the school and who have all these different friends and connections and we all come together and are able to serve our school together.
I did football, swimming, and track all four years. National Honor Society, Pershing Pals is a big one, Rocket Crew, Sportsmanship Committee. We just really try to help promote a good sportsmanship as well as just getting people to the games and supporting our team.
When I was our first year teacher, I thought, wow, I've gotten to the wrong profession. I don't know how I got into this profession. This is too overwhelming. I can't do all this. And then a few months into it, I realized, all you can do is your best every day. All you can do is your best. You go home, you try and let everything go, you get up the next day, and you give your very best the next day. And that has gotten me through 33 years. So we have the same philosophy. You just do your very best every day.
Right. Well, I know that we've talked about it before, that we always wanted to be in some kind of helping profession. And I don't know that we knew the word profession when we were growing up, but it was how can we make a difference in the world? And how can we give back? And how can we make life better for people in need in some sense?
I call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Board of Education for June 15, 2016. April, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Ms. Byer is excused.
Mr. Boswell.
Present.
Mrs. Danick.
Here.
Mrs. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Present.
Ms. Mumgarde.
Here.
Mr. Schulte.
Here.
I would announce that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the rear of the room between the double doors, and we have one set of minutes for your approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Next, we have Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, and I would like to recognize Matt.
If Lisa Morehouse could come join me. We have a very special employee here with us today. She's been elected president, soon to be president, president-elect of a national society, which is exciting. And she's been with us for 23 years, you said?
Correct.
And in the same office role for 18 years. Am I remembering that right? So she works in the HR department, so I've got a resolution to honor her as she has this prestigious opportunity. Whereas Lisa Morehouse has been elected as president-elect of the National Association of Education Office Professionals, and whereas Lisa Morehouse understands how professional standards and professional growth will impact teachers and staff members throughout the district, state, and country. And whereas Lisa Morehouse has represented LPS at area, state, and national conferences with a strong desire to improve herself and make LPS a better workplace. And whereas Lisa Morehouse has a reputation for honesty and integrity among her own coworkers and understands the values of those traits for professional growth within LPS. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Lisa Morehouse for her election as president-elect of the National Association of Educational Office Professionals and for her commitment to professionalism and professional development. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to say thank you for this award and more so for the support that the district gives not only to the office professionals but to all of our employees. I get to travel a lot. I've gone to a lot of conferences for professional development. And when I speak to other office professionals and I tell them what kind of support we get, whether it is attending a local staff development, a conference, or taking classes to better ourselves and our jobs so that we can make everybody's life a little bit easier at LPS, they are just amazed because we do have wonderful support. I've got a fantastic boss, Dr. Weber, who has allowed me to tackle the next two years, and Dr. Joel, and everybody that has given me this honor. So I thank you very much. Proud to represent LPS.
Do you have any friends or family you'd like to introduce?
They would probably be upset if I didn't recognize them. I have a lot of my fellow office professionals and some of my staff is here to help share in this. I'd like to say thank you to all of them.
Heaven's Stand.
Yeah, Heaven's Stand, too.
That's a lot of support in the room. Thank you all for coming. So Matt?
That was supposed to be in the form of a motion.
Thank you. I saw Kathy first.
And I would second that question.
Discussion? Annie?
I would just like to note before they all head out how important it is. Because one of my favorite office professionals is sitting in the room here. And as a new mom to the elementary schools and trying to figure out the PTO system, she taught me many things. And I would say without all of you wonderful people sitting in the front office of our schools, for all of the parents who come to you, you are the first line of, I wasn't going to say defense, but that is not the right word. You're the first line of communication in the face of LPS to so many parents. And the fact that you are going to represent us so well at the national level is quite an honor. And I've just been speaking from personal experience how strong and wonderful your jobs are. So thank you very much.
Very good. Seeing no other comments? April, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, I would like to recognize Annie.
I'm asking David Beatty to come on up. I forgot to ask you, how long have you been with LPS?
This will be entering my eighth year.
Your eighth year. All right. And David has been, Mr. Beatty is working with the Pathfinder Education Program, and he's going to give us a little bit of info about that in just a bit. But I would love to be able to read this out. Whereas David Beatty, the e-learning instructor, career, and technical teacher for the Pathfinder Education Program at Lincoln Public Schools, was recently honored as the Distinguished Educator of the Year by the National Partnership for Juvenile Services. And whereas David Beatty discovers new ways to increase student courses completions in e-learning classes and provides students with business and technology-related teaching that stretches their boundaries. And whereas David Beatty is recognized as an educational leader locally, statewide, and nationally. And whereas David Beatty follows best practices and his own personal passion to provide a high-quality education while helping students meet whatever challenges they encounter. And whereas David Beatty is well-respected by his peers for his commitment to all youth and his belief that every student can have a productive and inspiring future. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate David Beatty for being named the Distinguished Educator of the Year by the National Partnership for Juvenile Services and for his commitment to students and their personal and academic growth. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for inviting me here this evening. It's wonderful to have an opportunity to talk and just reflect a little bit about the work that we do at the Pathfinder Education Program and with our students. Pathfinder Education Program is based within Lancaster County Youth Services Building. It's a pretty unique setting in that it partners with the Lancaster County Youth Services and Lincoln Public Schools. So there's a great collaborative spirit there. Daily, we have, our population fluctuates up and down. We can sit around on average about approximately 40 students, for example, at this current time. Grade seven through 12 represented, and a wide variety of students. We try a number of different strategies to really engage youth in the learning process and then to integrate them back, reintegrate them back, and transition them when you get back to their local schools and other counties within Nebraska as well.
Then, do you want anyone I'd like to introduce?
Yes. My better half here this evening. Abby? Abby Beatty? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Mr. President, I would like to put that in as a motion. I move that we pass that.
Thanks, Annie. Connie?
I second that.
Discussion? Kathy?
One of the unique things at LPS is everybody makes mistakes. And when kids make mistakes, it's great to have a program in place that helps them recognize that they can atone for that mistake while still keeping up with their education so that they can move forward and that mistake doesn't shape their life. It helps them become a new direction in their life. So thank you for all you do.
We believe in second chances. Thanks, Kathy. Any other comments? April, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next is public comment. I haven't received any cards. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Lanny?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Sarah's second. Matt?
I'll second that.
Connie?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all contracts and payments to the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln Lancaster County. As part of Agenda Item 8.2A and 8.2D, set forth in the agenda materials for this meeting, I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Annie?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all claims or payments to the University of Nebraska State Museum, UNSM, or any subsidiaries or affiliates as part of Agenda Item 8.2.8, set forth in the agenda materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on same, and I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, April, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to items for first reading. Item 9.1.1, High School Attendance Boundary Recommendations. Lanny?
This item comes from the Planning Committee, where I served with Barb and Matt. And this item is our recommendation of that committee. As you know, earlier this year, our board voted to enforce the high school choice deadline for students transferring into North Star. And the boundary change that we are recommending is an additional step to help stabilize enrollment at North Star. And at this time, I would call on Dr. Standish to explain the details of the proposal.
Of course. In the attachments before you, you will see Attachment 1, which has our existing high school boundaries as they are for the 15-16 school year. And then Attachment 2 would show how we are taking what can be commonly referred to as the Clinton Elementary area, and we are moving it from being assigned to North Star to being assigned to Northeast. I will keep in mind that high school selection will continue to be in effect. So if a student has a desired high school that is not their attendance area school, or this change of assignment changes their desired high school, they would need to follow the school, high school selection process, turn in their form and paperwork on time. And that is something we're continuing to monitor but hope to honor in the years to come, because that's a longstanding tradition of school choice in Lincoln. So that is our intention at this point, is to continue to honor school choice that follows the process. But we also have to keep an eye on North Star numbers and monitor that. We do believe this will have an impact over four years. It's going to take some time to have an impact. Students who will be in eighth grade this fall at Coler Middle School will be impacted by this decision. And so that is kind of one of the audiences that we want to keep informed as we're talking through this.
Other comments? Lanny?
Yes, I'd just like to note that this boundary change does not affect this fall. It'll take effect for the 2017-18 school year. So families still have that full year to make their decisions. And as noted, high school choice is still in effect at all of our high schools. It'll just be from our previous vote, the deadline will be enforced in January for this particular school. I'd also like to thank staff, particularly the planning staff, for the extensive analysis that they did on the student enrollment numbers at Coler, at Clinton, at North Star, at Northeast, the dot maps that were generated, all of the information that was brought together so that we could finalize this recommendation.
And my understanding is you had a town hall?
Yes, we also had an open house at Coler Middle School for this, and no one in attendance opposed the plan because no one other than LPS staff and media were in attendance, so...
Liz?
I would like to add that we have an online open house, that people don't have to leave their house to attend, where they can submit questions, comments, or feedback for the board, and that is on our website, front and center. People can engage in between now and when this comes back for a vote in two weeks.
Thanks, Liz. Kathy?
Have we thought about talking to the families at the Clinton PTO and maybe their community learning center? Maybe not at this point, but so they get prepared for this information. I know sometimes they think that they belong in one place, and nope, that's not where you get to go. So it might be a good place that we could talk to the families that are at Clinton. I don't know that it necessarily has to be done in the next couple of weeks, because truthfully, I don't think anybody's in school mode when it's the first couple of weeks in summer.
Emails were sent to all of the families involved, so I do believe that there's been some contact out to all the families for this situation.
Well, then I'm going to go back to some questions we had earlier, because if we're only using email as a form of communication, did we contact those who don't have email?
We used our school messenger process. So that's where families can designate what they would like. I think you make a good point for the future, though, that if this boundary is adopted at our next meeting, we'll need to make sure the principals are armed and ready to communicate that with families in the coming year, so it doesn't come as a surprise to anybody come December. So notice, shortly after the school year gets started, of all that excitement settling down, kind of asking principals to do a round of information, especially for those eighth graders at Coler Middle School is a great suggestion. We can do that.
And as we look at these numbers, long-term, three to four years, North Star's got, what, they had 2,400 kids that could have gone there, 600 transferred out, 400 transferred in, left us with 2,200. Do we anticipate, do we have any indication of what this change will do over a four- or five-year period if everybody went where they were supposed to?
When we forecasted it out, it did bring North Star to that 2,100, which most importantly is keeping it within that parameter and not letting it go above that parameter.
And that also factors in all of the significant growth from FuJr. and...
It has the attendance area growing through the cohort, and we'll have to see over time whether there's enough growth built in or not. I know new construction is very significant in that area. And just like everything else we talked about in that school district, that is something that is pressing as a need all throughout the school district, and I think it'll be pressing here as well. I wouldn't imagine that'd be any different.
Fully supportive of this. I was just trying to get a feel for, is it enough?
Thanks, Kathy. Other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, this will be back for action at our next meeting. Next, from the superintendent, we have contracts. And that is Dr. Standish.
This is one of our high school trips. These come to the board, there's a contract for travel involved. So this is a Southwest trip. If you remember, this past year, Northeast went to London. So we have some of these opportunities for our students where they travel with a performance group or another extracurricular group of some kind. So this is just the Southwest trip coming through the board.
Questions? Annie?
Could you clarify for me what it is we're doing when we do this? I mean, they raise the money for it, correct?
This is a large trip, and so there's a lot of fundraising. They are subject to fee waiver, but boosters, students, everybody works really hard to kind of spread out the fundraising and do as much as possible. And so this is a contract which comes to the board. So we're approving that, we're approving the trip and working through a particular service in order to facilitate the trip.
That is ultimately paid for by the school and the booster club, correct?
It's paid for by students, but a lot of fundraising goes into that.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions? Matt?
I was wondering if December trip to Hawaii, if they needed any chaperones?
I can certainly check that out. I would be welcome, I'd be happy to accompany you for any...
We do that by seniority, Matt.
No harm in school board oversight. Okay.
I'm never getting there.
Never too bad to try.
That's right. Seeing no other questions, then, that'll be back for action at our next meeting. Next, action items. Number 10.1, Evaluation and Evaluation Summary for the Superintendent of Schools. Kathy?
Two weeks ago, we had a significant discussion and a summary document on Dr. Joel's evaluation. We've been well-served by Dr. Joel, and because of that, I will make the following motion, that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's evaluation for 2015-2016 and place it in his personnel file with the public comic summary thereof.
Sarah's second. Connie?
I'll second that.
Comments? Comments?
I made all my comments two weeks ago. I suppose I could reiterate them if you'd like.
We've all had a fair amount of conversation on this one. Okay, seeing no comments or questions. April, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, Item 10.2, Proposed Contract with the Superintendent of Schools. Kathy?
I would move approval of the contract as presented and approve an extension and compensation increase in the proposed contract.
Annie?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I believe we discussed the contract as well two weeks ago, and it falls well within a modest increase but recognizes the great work that Dr. Joel has served for our district.
Well said. Other comments? Seeing none. April, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, Item 10.3, Proposed Contracts with Associate Superintendents for Instruction, Business Affairs, Human Resources, the Assistant Superintendent for General Administration, and Governmental Relations. And this has my name, but I'm going to turn this over to Steve.
Yes. As Mrs. Danick said before, we talked about this two weeks ago. The raises that are proposed for the executive team are in line with budget parameters and salary parameters for all of the groups.
Kathy?
I would move approval of the -- let me make sure I get the right one. That the Board of Education ratify the recommended one-year contract extensions and total salary increases of 2.85% overall total package compensation with increases of 2.91% for the Associate Superintendent for Instruction, the Associate Superintendent for Business Affairs, the Associate Superintendent for Human Resources, and the Assistant Superintendent for General Administration and Governmental Relations.
Lanny?
Second.
Discussion. Kathy?
I don't know if anybody in the public is as aware as those of us who sit at this table how fortunate we are to have a uniquely qualified staff in every position. People that came from higher leadership positions came to this district, and they bring us not only great work for the community, but they understand that every child, every day, needs a qualified, experienced school district. And they give us great input in helping move there. The raises are, again, modest, but I hope that they understand that they are given with the respect and admiration for the work that you do each and every day.
Other comments? Seeing none. April, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Moving on, nothing from board committees. Next is Item 10.5.1, Proposed Agreements with Administrators, Custodial Employees Association, Maintenance Employees Association, Office Professionals Association, Technicians, and Transportation Employee Association. Eric?
Yes, this is for your second reading, your consideration. All of these agreements are within the parameters established by the board and represent 2.88 salary increases in the first year, 2.89% salary increase in the second year, and are for your consideration.
Is there a motion? Kathy?
That we ratify the proposed agreements with the Administrators, the Custodial Employees Association, the Maintenance Employees Association, the Office Professionals Association, the Technicians, and the Transportation Employees Association for the 2016-17 and the 2017-18 school years.
Matt?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Seeing none. April, would you please call the roll?
I do have a question.
Oh, did we? Give us a second, sorry.
Any groups left?
Two. Nutrition Services and Per Professionals.
Thank you. All right. April, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, we have Item 10.5.2, Shelf Stable Refrigerated and Frozen Food. Liz?
This is a routine item that we do to establish contracts for the coming year for different vendors for different type of foods. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Is there a motion? Annie?
I move that we provide shelf-stable refrigerated frozen food, 8485 and 8489.
Thank you. Is there a second? Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Discussion. Annie?
I just hope that I never lose my sense of awe of this, how much money that we spend to feed our children. I remember last year when this came up, I think Matt and I talked about this, that one of the first things we had approved was $3 million to go to just these vendors. And I was like, that's for everything, right? And everyone looked at me like I was insane. And I have mentioned this to several people recently, and I just want to say that I'm in awe of what we do. And I hope I never lose that when building million-dollar budgets in that, how much we are doing for other children in our city.
There's a whole team of people that makes that happen. Edith does a great job of her own.
Other comments? Seeing none. April, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next is Item 10.5.3, Contract with First Student. Liz?
This was discussed at our last board meeting in conjunction with the transportation plan. This is a necessity we're currently in based on the employment market. I do know that it's a three-year contract. That was so we could get the best pricing and the best deal for the school district. It does have a termination clause, so I think we do have some flexibility going forward. But we do need to have this up and running to ensure that all the students that are expecting to come to school on a bus next fall can get here with it right.
Is there a motion? Kathy?
That the Board approve the proposed contract with first student.
Connie?
I second that motion.
Discussion. Kathy?
I would just note that this is a supplement, not an instead of, for the Transportation Department that does an excellent job for Lincoln Public Schools. We're probably a victim of our own success here in our low unemployment rate and our inability to get enough drivers that can work the hours that we need to do transportation. And so it's my second chance on this particular thing to say, if you guys want to be bus drivers, I know Dr. Weber will take your application and help you through the process.
Absolutely. Sorry, we have a great team of people, and you're exactly right. We would prefer bringing this back in-house. It's more cost-effective, and we think we provide a tremendous service in Lincoln Public Schools.
Other comments? Seeing none. April, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Moving on to informational items and reports. Does anyone wish to give a report from a committee? Seeing none. Is there a report from the Career Academy? Lanny?
There is. The Career Academy Joint Board met this morning, which I rarely get to say because of our Wednesday meeting. We also would like to note that we graduated 125 seniors from the Career Academy this year for our first year, so we're real excited about that. And I have an update on numbers for the fall. We're looking at 112 returning students, 315 new students. So those numbers are slightly lower than what I reported in our last meeting, but we kind of expected a little bit to fall off during the summer. But we're still looking at a projected enrollment well over 400 students, and we are at capacity in several pathways. So it's pretty exciting growth. I also wanted to note that we have two state champions for the Skills USA contest that are headed to Louisville for the national competition, and that would be in culinary and construction. So our students are showing their skills at the state and national level. And I also would note that we have started participating in the Career Academy Advisory Council, which is a group of Nebraska Career Academies that meet regarding Rule 47 compliance, which is what allows us to be a Career Academy under state law. With that, we will not have a meeting in July, and the next meeting of the Career Academy Board will be August 10th, the week before school starts.
Got a question? Connie?
Lanny, I heard you this weekend say, how many businesses do we have partners with now?
We have, currently, we have 130 business partners and about 200, over 200 individuals from those businesses that are involved either as mentors to our students, involved in the advisory committees that help us with curriculum issues, or providing internships. The response of the business community during this first year has just been overwhelming. It's been fantastic.
Great. That makes me so happy to know we're growing our own employees in Lincoln.
Yes, we are.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lanny. There's no update from the superintendent at this meeting. That brings us to announcements of upcoming events for the board. And we have on June 28th, another public budget forum at 5:00 here in the boardroom, and that will be followed by our regularly scheduled board meeting at 6:00. That brings us again to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, there is no request for a closed session tonight. That puts us into recess to move into the ESU-18 meeting. Could we pass that down?
Got it.
I hereby call this meeting of the Educational Service Unit 18 Board to order. April, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Ms. Byer is excused.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Here.
Mr. Schulz?
Present.
Thank you. I would announce that the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is still posted at the entrance to the room. We have two sets of minutes in front of us tonight for our organizational meeting and for the meeting of September of last year. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those minutes stand approved as published. Our next item is public comment. Is there anyone who would wish to address the Board of ESU-18 at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Don?
Move approval? Matt?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Are there any comments or discussion? Seeing none. April, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes. I do not have a request for a closed session, and with that, we are adjourned.
I think that might be the shortest meeting in history.
That was shortest.